...to our strategic planning. Do I need approval of the amended agenda? Captain MacKay? Secretary? For please? On favor? Adoption of the minutes for May tenth, two thousand seventeen, special council meeting.
Recommendation that council adopt the minutes of the May tenth, two thousand seventeen, special council meeting as presented.
Scott? On favor? May fifteenth, regular council meeting minutes. Secretary?
That council adopt the minutes of May fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, regular council meeting as presented.
Second? On favor? Any business arising from those minutes? None? Summarization, page twenty-one. Anyone want to bring up on that? Okay? Oh, not sure.
I do have a question on the former building. We have a report on that, is that one no longer relevant? It says we put on cost of removal or renovation of building, if it's a progress?
The quality. Council directed us to develop another report, sorry, it's not on the removal, it's on the amount of money that's needed for repair.
Oh.
So, I don't recall the date of the meeting, but council didn't direct us to remove the building, but rather to see if it could be occupied by the GeoPark who came in to give presentation.
Okay, and when that report comes back, then we'll decide whether it's removable or... Okay, thank you.
Nothing else, there's a lot of delegations. I don't think people from the BCA here.
No, they couldn't make this decision.
So, that takes a five point two, the Emperor's Challenge, two thousand seventeen, Brandon here, oh, this one.
Welcome. Thank you, worship. So, I'm here representing the Emperor's Challenge Committee. We've been blessed with council's support of our event in the past versus for support this year. Most of the items that we're looking for are similar to last year, with the addition this year, number seven, the pop-up tents. So, we had less than desirable weather last year, and having some extra tents, extra coverage for our participants would have been a great addition, so we're looking for tents for this year. Other than that, I'm sure you all know about the Emperor's Challenge and what a great event it is for not only the Wolverhampton National Society, but also for the town. Yeah, I don't really have too much to say.
The pop-up tents have been out there before, though, haven't they?
Not the new ones, not to my knowledge.
Okay. So, is this coming back for us?
We, because of the timeline, your worship, we have a report on it later on in the agenda for council to make a decision.
Okay. I think you did a good job.
Well, thank you.
Okay, it's course one, it's six point one. Information is discussion.
For information?
Yes, secretary. Scott? On favor? Okay, six point two, government office, quarterly reporting process changes. Information is per discussion. Councilor?
More for information, worship.
On favor? On favor? Okay, six point three, question to bring it up for discussion. CEO would like to make some comments on that.
Thank you. So, PSEFM is looking to set up a radio station in Tumble Ridge. They need use of some of our facilities to do that. I asked them to send a letter outlining what it is they would need from the district to accomplish this. I can tell you from my conversations with this Svalsky, that they need internet, the internet here in Town Hall to do this. So, what I suggested to him was that he send a letter detailing what he would need from the district to accomplish this. That's not in this letter. What he's asked is if council would be interested in having a meeting with him. So, that could be either council visiting the radio station in Chatlin, or we could ask him to come to a council meeting to discuss. So, I just need council's direction on what you would prefer to do. He said that I think if the meeting was in Chatlin, he could show you a bit more of how the operation would actually work, and if he, but if he came to the council meeting, he would be available for all the council that was here. So, it's up to, it's up to council how you'd like to proceed.
Okay. Personally, I'd like to see him here.
On me.
Everybody here? That'd be nice to have. Okay, six point four. UBCM resolutions also protection for discussion. Secretary?
Information, your worship.
Secretary? MacKay? On favor? Okay, bylaws, council remuneration and expenses amendment, bylaw number six five six, two thousand seventeen. Number one. Secretary?
Recommendation number one, that council gives first reading to council, remuneration expenses amendment, bylaw number six five six, twenty seventeen.
Secretary for that? Council MacKay? Discussion on it? On favor? Two? Secretary?
That council gives second reading to council remuneration and expenses amendment bylaw number six five six, two thousand and seventeen.
Secretary? Council MacKay? Discussion? On favor? Three? Council MacKay?
The council give third reading to the council, remuneration expense amendment bylaw number six five six, two thousand seventeen.
Second? Secretary? Discussion? Yes.
It'd be nice if this was followed up by some suggestions were made that a sitting council shouldn't have to make this decision, so maybe before our term ends, it might be something to bring up at that time, so following council. I don't have to address it.
What do you propose?
That prior to us vacating these seats, that maybe it's something that we, so the next council doesn't have to.
And to who?
Of council, of the sitting council or the next council?
That's actually why we're doing it now.
Okay, yeah, so this will come up again, then that settles it.
Secretary?
Thank you, worship. Just to be clear, if we have a policy to review our stipends, let's say every three years, which I personally think is a good idea to do that, then at that time, I'm not sure whether to come forward or not. I mean, if they're still comparable and so forth to other communities that have leg size and so on, then in terms of increasing them wouldn't necessarily be necessary. That's up to council. But I think if we take the practice of what we do here is good for, for let's say, a three-year period of time, if the incoming council won't change it, they can change it. But in the meantime, it's not a matter of reviewing it every year, and in terms of most salary administration policy reviews, that I've been familiar with in the past, it's normally done on that basis, not on an annual basis. But just as a suggestion, if we set every three years, then we could monitor that and make whatever adjustments are necessary, whatever council's budget.
You're going to reset the policy, Mr. Wall?
Council could create that, just in policy, doesn't need to be in the bylaw, it would just be a review. If council wanted to put that into this bylaw, we would need to rescind readings, do amendments, and bring this back to a different council. So, it depends how you want to go. If you want to put it in the bylaw, you can do so by rescinding readings, rejecting this final reading, rescinding the third reading and making amendments, or we could just look to create a salary policy review.
I think that's... Council Scott?
And then, yes, when we were first discussing it, I had said that I was going to waive my increase, is that still an option? Like, I don't feel comfortable with...
It's not, it's not an option. You can take it and do whatever you want, but then you get to something, I think it's... I think all the, everybody's got to have to be on the same weight, right, Mr. Wall?
This will be by bylaw, so administration will be paying out as per bylaw. We can't set different amounts for different councils.
Okay, all in favor? Post? Do you oppose, talster?
Yes.
On slightly premise, amendment by law number six five two, two thousand seventeen.
Recommendation that council adopt the District of Tumble Ridge, on slightly premise, amendment by law number six five two, two thousand seventeen.
Secretary? Council Scott? Discussion? On favor? Traffic and highways regulation amendment by law number six five three, two thousand seventeen. Secretary Casey?
Council adopt the District of Tumble Ridge Traffic and Highways Regulation Amendment by law number six five three, two thousand and seventeen.
Secretary? Scott? Discussion? Scott?
With this here implemented, will that give us the opportunity to stop the parking across from tags and sort of there's some trucks, I think, parking over in those areas, which would be district property, I'm assuming? So, with that, like, let us, is that one of the reasons those trucks are parking in those areas now? I think they've moved from residential area, and now they're parking like across from tags, twelve-hour shift or whatever, or right across from the liquor store?
Well, I'd have to review what's our property in the bylaw.
Okay.
Council Scott?
David?
Seven four, municipal ticketing by law, six five four, two thousand seventeen.
Secretary Casey?
That council adopt the District of Tumble Ridge Municipal Ticketing Information Amendment by law number six five four, two thousand and seventeen.
Secretary? Question? On favor? We have a new business. Lions Club International Celebration this week, June fifty-nine, two thousand seventeen. Recommendation there. Secretary Casey?
Thank you, your worship. I don't know if it's necessary to read it all, but I would recommend...
That's okay. Actually, we've, because this meeting was scheduled for last week, a lot of this stuff has gone. The only item that's left to be dealt with is the bottom bullet there, permission for a donation of district souvenirs, pins. If council wanted to deal with that, the rest of it would be...
Fair enough. I would move the permission for a donation of district souvenirs, example pins for local club members to take with them to the Lions Club's international conference being held in Chicago at the end of June, which will help promote Tumble Ridge.
Secretary? Discussion on that? I think it's a very good idea myself. On favor? Okay, eight point two, TR Community Forest shareholders resolution. Council MacKay?
Recommend the council approve the shareholders' resolution to appoint the board of directors for the Tumble Ridge community forests, accept the audited financial statement for two thousand fifteen, approve KPMG as the auditors for two thousand sixteen.
Secretary? Question? Discussion? On favor? Okay, five three, Canada Day fireworks display road closure. Secretary?
That council approves a tender buckling way as per the map in appendix A from eighteen hundred hours until the end of the fireworks display on July first, two thousand and seventeen, worship.
Secretary? MacKay? Discussion? On favor? Eight point four, two thousand sixteen, statement of financial information, associate report. Council MacKay?
When the council received the two thousand sixteen statement of financial information, sort of...
Secretary? Secretary? Discussion? On favor? Replacement of log pole for destination signs.
That council forward the signpost project to the two thousand and eighteen budget discussions.
Secretary? Council MacKay? Discussion? Yeah, I think the big thing here is we've got to find a place for it, so it's something that we should bring to discussion some...
Would this fit with our strategic planning? Discuss someplace different, or is it better just having staff bring the report back to us? Or possibilities are possible?
I think it would be better for back from staff, and then we can discuss it. I think, you know, we've, we're so far in the tourism, this is going to lie behind it, and I don't know if we're still, not so much, but it's going to be tough to find a good spot. Council Casey?
Thank you, worship. I kind of like Counselor Scott's idea of bringing up strategic plan, because it might be something that when, you know, maybe that council doesn't see going forward, because of just, you know, the ways we're moving with tourism, is that something we want to go back to?
Well, I just wanted to say that within the report, there's a number of different areas that this go into. There's really not much more staff can add at this point, it's just whether or not council wants to move forward with it and where.
Sorry, I didn't read that first.
That's okay. There's no discussion, decision required from council right now. I think that if it's something that council wants to move forward with, proceed with the motion you have in front of you to move it to the twenty eighteen budget discussions. If it's something that you don't want to move forward with, I would recommend just defeating the recommendation and we won't spend any more time on it.
I'd like to see a step come back for discussions. There's been a lot of work done to it, you know, it's, there's some discussion. Okay. So, we've got a motion?
Forward to twenty eighteen budget discussion test.
Okay, anybody, any more discussion on it? On favor? Council expense policy.
Thank you, worship. The council adopt the amended council expense policy as attached in appendix A.
Secretary? Question? Discussion? I think things have changed in the world, and this is, I think, a good idea. People that sit in these chairs are not doing legal, but so... That's it. Okay, anybody else? Council MacKay?
Yeah, I've got my own personal opinion on this. If we've got an issue, then we've never really had a problem solved in this chamber. And I don't know if this would not lead into magnifying the issue of any more trouble. And I can see, once that happens, I can see different sides would get their heels dug in, and I think possibly a larger problem would be created by not taking the few minutes it sometimes takes, or maybe a little longer after a meeting, just to air differences that might occur. But I think much, much, you do get waters involved, and then you become entrenched in your, in your preparation to happen. See in the past, you know, and not only, not only this council, but many councils, at the end of the day, you know, there's more times than not, the issues will be resolved in-house.
Yeah, and that has happened most times, but I know there's, has been people resigning from council, thinking that they could be on the one end of a leg, like, so, you know, I agree that this should be the last resort, but at least it should be there if somebody feels they need it. Council Scott?
What is the policy in other municipalities? Is this something that is, is exercise to other municipalities, or is this something we're implementing?
It's, the policies vary. This isn't some, if council was to adopt this, you wouldn't be the only community to adopt it. I wouldn't say it's the standard now. I would say more communities are moving towards a policy that has something like this in it. So, there are other communities that have policies like this, and you get communities that don't have any policy on it.
Council MacKay?
I think most, I guess, union agreements would have a dispute mechanism put in place prior to something like that, it could be tailored into here, that is a last resort, similar to an arbitration, where things you would do prior to that happening. And as you, as you mentioned earlier, if this was a last resort, and if nothing else, then that might be, if there was a process prior to that, maybe a new, some...
Anybody else? On favor? Post? Okay, eight point seven, Tourism Action Committee Terms of Agreement. Secretary?
Recommendation that council approves and adopts the Tourism Action Committee TAC Terms of Agreement dated June twenty, two thousand seventeen as presented, and that council approves the volunteer may have of this TAC committee as presented.
Secretary? Discussion? On favor? Oh, question, did it?
Just to comment, worship, it's not a big, I just wondered with, in terms of the numbers, there's ten on, on boards such as this and so forth, even numbers versus odd numbers, evens can be basically, you know, fifty percent for, fifty percent against, who makes the decision? Is it the presiding member? Odd numbers have a chance, less likely of doing that. That's the only comment I would bring up. Whether or not it's important enough is up to council, but that's the only thought that came to my mind, because of the numbers.
Yeah. I know that can be an issue to get to read the district, it's twelve. Mr. Wall?
I wouldn't think that's too much of an issue on the Tourism Advisory Committee. It's generally a consensus board. I know from my time on there, if something was going to be coming down to that close of a vote, you've got to stop working towards getting it, because it's not, it's not a hard deliberatory body like council is, where you need to make a decision, and that decision needs to be made. So, a four to three vote is the same as a seven to zero vote. This is more of a bringing everybody together. So, if you get something that's splitting a committee like this, then you generally just don't push it through.
Council Scott?
I was just wondering, too, I see the voting change from what I said, must be twelve to, I think, shell or something like that. When somebody does resign, and there isn't an alternate, is there a timeframe of that person being replaced, or does it just continue on until the next top director is...
Mr. Wall?
Members have been appointed on an as-needed basis, so we're generally trying to stick with representation of all of the different groups. So, if a member from that group resigns, they'll stay vacant until somebody else from that group is able to come in and take his place.
On favor? DIT Love Tumble Ridge shot vocal campaign. Information or discussion? Just for information. Okay? Transformation? Information? Yeah. Museum deliverable. Secretary Casey?
I would move the recommendation as presented, worship.
Secretary? MacKay? Discussion on it? On favor? Schedule the meetings. I know August isn't on here, but I'll be on all of August.
I'm not sure who's active there. I'll take a look, worship.
Anything else on the calendar?
Okay, just before I forget, when I said the Emperor's Challenge was coming up later in the meeting, I thought we had a report on it, but it was just corresponded in six point one, so council should deal with the Emperor's Challenge request. Page twenty-three. So, if council wanted to debate a motion to provide the materials as requested by the Emperor's Challenge organizing committee, it'd work for us.
You get that motion? Council Casey?
I'll slow move it, worship.
Okay, secretary, Council Scott? Discussion on it? Council Scott?
I was just wondering if we have a value set on tallies? Can we find this?
Mr. Wall?
We don't at the moment, but what we're planning to do is at the end of this summer, bring back to council the value of these regular requests that we're getting, and recommend that moving forward be given, these events be given an amount in the grant and aid, and if they want to purchase those services from us, they'll come back. So, similar as to the way the original Grizz Fest reports came, at the end of this summer, we're going to bring a report, so this and any other regular requests for district staff, we're going to recommend council do it through the grant and aid process.
Any more discussion on the motion? On favor? Plan, we haven't got nothing on that. Nine point one, a movement to the strategic planning meeting. The most motion which is, also approved waiver to one of the free uses for the bird watchers event, which happened actually last weekend, but it was late having the meeting, so that's why it ended up like this. Anglo American did come through as one day, but there was two days, so we're just asking for the other one.
Second? Make that motion? Okay, secondary? Counsel Scott? Discussion? On favor? Yeah.
Okay, it's the council's business. Officer Mackay?
We attended the FCM, and that was four pretty interesting keynote speakers with the Prime Minister, Paul Stade, followed by Tom Mulcaire the next, Elizabeth May, and behind Watson, the VP for the South Surrey, Lake Rock area. And one of the big things on the Prime Minister's address was the amount of infrastructure grants and so there, the spending, which is dramatically being increased, and it's to the tune of about one hundred eighty-seven billion, promised over the next twelve years, which more than doubled the original spending plans. And part of the plan is the proposal of a thirty-five billion dollar Canada infrastructure grant. And that would aim to fund the new large projects, mostly owned and run by private sector, and that could, a little vague on that, and I think there's mixed feelings on that particular issue. You could see bridges and roads that would end up with tolls and things like that, and be privately run. So there's still a little bit up in the air. Different mayors would come out for it and against it. It can be his statements very much in favor of it. He feels that this was actually already, he's seen a little benefit there from being able to put the transit system out for retender, and he's already seen the price coming down. So I don't know if that's something that just, I don't know if you have, but he claims that's part of it. And then, of course, the Mayor Nensky from Calgary, skeptic about it. So like I said, I think it's still up in the air, just what this is going to eventually come out. The partner, or partnership grants, the federal government will be funding up to forty percent, with municipalities covering twenty percent. And a lot of the provinces haven't opted into this yet, but have got the ability to do that. And I think communities like Tumbler Ridge, we're in a pretty key position to take advantage of a lot of that, because there's a lot of communities that cannot afford twenty percent, where we can probably take advantage. And I think if we start working on projects to put these grants in for, sorry, right now, getting ready for when they're ready, and we should be able to maximize maybe our intake, because we do have cash to fulfill our commitment. There was eleven, eleven point two billion over eleven years for initiatives designed to build on or prepare affordable housing, which is another big initiative, cheap housing, or not cheap, but I guess affordable. And more funding for clean water, another two billion for Northern, Rural and Northern Communities Fund that was approved in two thousand sixteen, and that's still fully committed to. Workshops, there was quite a few. There was innovating solutions to municipal economic challenges, municipal asset management. I've got a little thing that I want to gift each counselor, I'll pass that on later on. We had an opportunity to meet with Jocelyn Young, an informal, you had a, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, the person, you had a formal meeting with her, and it was kind of nice when we could just have an informal meeting and really sit down at the table and go over a lot of the stuff that we had talked about. And again, she just fully committed to the, fully committed to the, I guess, the things that she had talked about with you. And that is getting the, a lot of the stuff that CNMS left behind as well, to have the track fully repaired, which the work has already started, and it looks like it's on schedule. Also had the, you know, opportunity of sitting in on a meeting with the federal MP, and it was Jonathan Wilkinson, and he's the parliamentary secretary for the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, that was with yourself and Counsel Kaysley. And some things that were brought to attention is the fact that the HD mining has spent over two hundred million in exploration, exploration, oak sample development. And on February tenth, two thousand seventeen, BC presented a revised plan to address the protection and recovery of the southern mountain caribou, and provincial funding of twenty-seven million over the next three years to speed the caribou recovery efforts. And it was also pointed out that one of the things that have already taken place is when Quintet Hole reclaimed Chicano, the elk herd that was there has gone dramatically up to, in some cases, some reports between four and five hundred elk. That was never there before, so we know how to do it, and we know how to do it well. And I think one of the points that Mayor McPherson, that you had made, that did strike was the fact that the footprint this leaves is actually absolutely nothing compared to what open mine doesn't, so a lot less of the problems that can be mitigated by disparage of the lesser footprint. And the fact it's a twenty, twenty-five year mine life. And one of the surprising things is that before we got to meeting, the federal representative said that they're on board, that it's actually the province that's not, that's not, said not on board, that the whole topic is not with federal government, and he pointed towards the provincial government. So that's something that now that we should be lobbying those guys, and maybe get a more, two more questions out of, or answers, I guess, on that. We did have a meeting with the Community Forest, that was prior to, it was really short, but we gave out about thirteen different grants totaling thirty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. And it was all of the service clubs that we have in town, and as well as the Wolverine Nordic Mountain Society, pretty well full gamut of different, different. Pretty crowded, we still got a couple more that we're looking at, and one major that we're kind of discussing right now, too, at the same time. We do have our convention taking place this weekend, it's getting a little bit scary because we do have a tour going up to Fusil Falls, and the road is, was washed out, I understand it will be ready by the time we go. And also Highway ninety-seven, we don't get any mishaps there, but that could definitely seriously if people have to get into town. Other than those two major things, it's looking pretty good. That's my part.
Counsel Scott?
Just a couple of concerns against residents, the new signs that are going up around town. I've had comments about the visibility, like the verbiage is small on them, and there were people asking at the hospital, because like on the new signs, we have the H on that, but it's like, somebody was saying that they're going to take down the big green H. So just pointing out the trails in that, you almost have to walk up to them, driving, you can't really, they're not that easy to, and I don't know who to take that to, to address, you know, prior to getting any more made up. We should look at the size of the information on those sites. And a lot of concern on the highway between Tumbler Ridge and Chatlin, just the roads in, and that's maybe something where you should be talking to the authorities.
It's just hard to find somebody to talk to right now.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah? You done?
Yep.
Counsel Scrub?
I was just going to make a response to Counsel Scott. Jocelyn from CN was willing to write a letter of support regarding the roads from Tumbler to Chatlin because of the traffic on there without the rail, that that kind of plays a big part. So that was one thing that she's also on board with. So that was something else that was good on that meeting. Oh, I can just give, yeah. I'm pretty impressed with the relocation of our first grizzly. I think that it, the magnets and the information that we have out to the community has already worked, so that's, that makes me happy. FCM, what a beautiful city Ottawa is, very welcoming. It was exciting to be there, especially with Canada's one hundred and fiftieth birthday. Representing northern BC was important there. There was a lot of issues that are out in the north that need to be related to the rest of the country. Seeing Garth Frisell get the third vice president for the FCM Board is also good, because we see Garth from time to time, and then when we have issues, he's going to be, he's going to be good for us here, representing on that board. I got a phone call today while I was in Shop Easy. Another dinosaur find in Tumbler Ridge, it's pretty exciting. It's a skull. It could be the first, seventy-five million years old. I'm not going to put any more info on that, but I'm sure Charles will have it out into the press tonight. But yeah, the signage, it looks great. It might be, the font does seem to be a little smaller than I kind of figured, but it sure looks good. And I'm very happy to see the Love Tumbler Ridge program take off. It's been a while, it's been in the works for a while. I'm very happy to see it start in Tumbler. That's it.
Counsel Casey?
Thank you, Worship. Not too much that hasn't already been covered. The meeting with the Parliamentary Secretary for the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change, I thought was a, to talk about the HD mining situation, I thought was very, very encouraging and supportive, and I'm sure you'll elaborate more on that, but I came away from that having a real strong feeling with regards to making, making some things happen. Went to a, one of the sessions which covered innovative solutions to municipal economic challenges, and they talked about innovation being the key. They talked about a lighting network, which is something that I had not ever heard before. They talked about three pillars were mentioned, the right light, connected operations, and evolving applications. And they gave an example of Brockville, as I recall, with lights in tunnels, and which are really quite spectacular as trains and so forth are going through, or vehicles, whatever. And that's, that's one of the major projects that they had underway as well. And the other point presentation, they talked about renewal by our energy and the Prince George Forest industry. The presentation put up by the mayor was dealing with unconventional products from wood, and one of the things that they apparently had done is that they had built and have built a six-story building with only wood being used and nothing else, to take advantage of, of course, the forestry around the area. But it was a great innovative idea, it'd be kind of interesting to see six, six stories high and so forth. So overall, I felt that the convention was fine, there was some, some good guest speakers, but the highlight was the fact that when we went and talked about the HD mining, that I thought, again, was really a highlight for us and for Tumbler, and sounded exciting. And that's my report, sir.
Yeah. Okay, welcome eighty bird watchers to Tumbler Ridge on Friday night at the museum. They seem to have pretty good form there, even though the weather, they had one good day. While we're down in FCM, I talked to Mayor Penitent Creek, these, they haven't, they've been in wind farm business a lot longer than us, they've got some issues that they're running into now. So we were talking, we thought it'd be good for, to have a meeting somewhere, so mayors from all the towns that have wind farms in their vicinity, so that we're not making mistakes that they've already made and stuff like that, talk about the different ways that we can have our wind farms. So it's something that I've been talking to Jordan and trying to get something together. The meeting with CN, I thought, I think Jocelyn is going to be a very good person to work with. She sounds like she wants to help us. And if you're talking about the road and writing a letter of support on the road, I thought was a really good sign. HD, what I think was missed maybe was that the recommendation from the MP was to go and see, go get together with the NDP and Green Party and get them outside with our HD type of mining, and which I think shouldn't be, shouldn't be a bad, hard sell, because that should be the type of mining they would shift to for, in the Green Party and NDP. I'm not sure how NDP thinks of the underground law of mining, but we'll have to work on that, that'll be up top of the list of things to get at, UVCN. That letter from MCGLA that was sent out to, I guess it was to Governor General, no, the governor, and it, you saw the letter that I sent. And the reason I did it so quick was I wanted it to get to them before they had their emergency board meeting, and I didn't know that what they did is wrong. Because we all get painted with that brush, unless you're not a member. So I, you know, the regional district, they've also sent a letter now, too, so it's them to, being partisan. The issue I really saw there was that the new president, it's, her husband's in, and I don't think she was, I think she was just because she knew that this was, I think she's lost further than that. Anyway, we sent the letter, and we'll see how that works out. They've been apologizing crazy, so they wish they hadn't done it. There was one more thing at the FCM was talking with Counsel Casey, not Counsel Casey, Counsel Kirby, both internet in town here. If we could have a better internet, we'd have a lot more chance of drawing some businesses to town, and home-based businesses that need really good internet. So I went to an internet session there, and it was, my phone, which I won't do. It was Shaw, SSI, and Northwest Tal put on this, and they're talking about 5G wireless, which is supposed to be coming this fall, they can supply it, and it's something that just goes on our pool up here, our tower up here, and it's going to solve all our problems. And it's way cheaper than, they complained, I said, was we've got fiber optics coming to town, but it's too expensive to get it in your house, really, to set up, is what I've heard. So what they said is, this wireless thing is going to just bring everybody right up the speed that's happening this fall. So I don't know if we can, if we can do it, like Shaw, SSI, and Northwest Tal, they don't say Talus, so I don't know if, it'll be something to look into, Your Worship, because, yeah, the cost of taking fiber optic to houses in Tumbler Ridge, Talus is that they just won't do it. Not, not for a while, anyway. But anyway, they say this is coming this fall, and so I think we should check into it. Kind of important. And that's about it for me. So it's just two, Washington period.
I guess I'm the only one.
I've got one comment and one question. My comment is the signs that are up are, they look fantastic, but it is the size of the sign and the amount of stuff you're trying to put on the sign, it's just too busy. and the amount of stuff you're trying to put on the sign, it's just too busy when you're driving by. That's what I find. But they, they do look good, but the thing is you want to be able to read them too. So I don't know if that's something you guys can look into and maybe do a bit of change on. I don't know, I, I know the cost has already been put into it, but, um, that and my question is, the Lions kept growing, gonna get a gator this year or?
Get a what?
A gator? Remember we were supposed to get that old gator and you gave that to somebody else and?
I'm not sure where we're at, but that actually.
We came last year and we asked for a new one and you said the district was gonna buy a new one and we were using the old one. That got given to someone else last time I heard it.
So the, the, we haven't replaced the current gator. We haven't given a gator to anybody either, so we still have it. If council wants to supply staff with a new one, we could certainly give the old one to the Lions if that's what council wanted us to do. How long do you think that needs replacing?
Two, three years, it's always?
It's up to council. We think we can probably get a couple more years out of it, but if you wanted to give the old one to, um, the Lions, we can order a new one, it's not an issue.
Well, I guess it's something we could bring up, uh, PMP, PMP and have a discussion on it.
It, it would still be the property of the district. It would just be the summer usage of it, like the lawn, we're the same.
Bring it to a PMP and we'll.
Okay. So at this point, your worship, it's kind of how you want to proceed? You want to do the asset management meeting now and then go into close after asset engineering's done? You want to close, close, and then asset management?
Okay, so we, let's do the asset man, just go right into the asset management?
Just make a motion to, to bring in the asset management meeting agenda and we'll be good to go?
So move to.
Is any sector, Scott? Favor? And Scott is the chair on the asset management. He's gonna check on the seat.
So we'll call the asset management, the agenda meeting to order at 10 to 6. And we'll have the adoption of amendments on March 13th, 2012.
Amendments on March 13th, 2017, asset management, may be adopted as presented.
Second, um, Mayor McPherson, and discussion. I just have one thing, councillor Scott, I was away at that meeting, but it was with notice. Anybody else? Okay, so all in favor? It's passed, carried. Um, maybe this, uh, 3.1. Councillor Kaysley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The council supports the district application for the federal strategic priorities grant to hire on a short-term basis a geographical information system technician. And that council authorizes the district to immediately contract a GIS technician contingent on grant funding.
Second, councillor Kirby, all in favor, discussion?
Is this full?
Oh, sorry, you're chairing now, sorry. It's $50,000, it won't be full funding. So it would be $50,000. We estimate that the yearly price on this is gonna be about 75, so it would be full funding for this year's budget. Uh, if we continue on with the position, we'd need funding into next year.
Okay, so we'll be called on for a, for a portion of 25,000?
Not this, this year, cause this year's, we're, we're so far into this year already that we wouldn't use up 50% of this budget.
Through to Mr. Wall. When we complete, like, if we are successful in getting a technician, will they give us a list of all of our assets, um, like infrastructure, life funding, streets and stuff like that? And we'll have a complete inventory with the lifespan that's existing?
So I, I'd just clarify, if I give, they'll take the data we already have and input into a system that'll be stored and easily accessible, so they won't actually produce the data, but they'll, they're be responsible for getting it, but that will be the system.
But once we have that, then it'll make it much easier for us to monitor and just plan each year. Okay, perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Did we vote on that? All in favor?
No, we didn't.
There we go. This is carried. And 3.2, ice skating trail path slutes are concept approval. So, MacKay.
Recommended, the asset management committee recommends to council, the district, Tumbler Ridge developer, report to council, which include the cost of construction, installation, maintenance costs of a little facility in Tumbler Ridge, ice skating trail path slutes, of course, under the 2018 cap.
Yeah, my first and second is, um, discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly voted in favor, I think it's speaking, I'll move it. And I think, you know, we've talked about this in the past in terms of, of trying to do something for the wooded area, the rest of it and so forth, but I think the recommendation encompasses the kind of work that, that would really, really be an asset to Tumbler Ridge as well. So I'd certainly favor it.
Councillor Kirby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the wooded ice skating trails interest me. I think if we could find a way that, uh, you know, using the existing, like, the cut blocks close to the golf course and having the golf course as the, you know, kind of the main focus, you know, maybe it, it gives us yearly use of, of the Pro Shop. You know, it's, it's definitely something to look at, something that maybe we can even move to our strategic planning session to see what, you know, kind of what council's thoughts are on this. But it, it definitely is something I like seeing in the report, I think it's exciting. But I want, it's gotta be done right, though. You're gonna wanna draw more than our community in and if it's gonna be, you know, it is a way to generate some money and some tourism.
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask, it's, uh, is this done anywhere in the north?
Fort St. John doesn't.
Fort St. John doesn't?
This would be a bigger program, this would be a better program, Fort St. John would be the closest.
I've never heard of it.
I think it was last year, their first year trying it.
Your worship, through to Madam Chair. The Fort St. John did theirs as a pilot project. Theirs was, as, uh, I see how a wall has indicated, very small on scale to what we're proposing here. Uh, they did theirs on their existing walking trails, which were asphalt trails. Frankly, they didn't find, you know, as the weather warmed up, of course, they lost the trails. What we're proposing is similar to Ontario, which was included in the report, and there's a video there. I would strongly recommend, if you haven't had a chance to see that video, to, to look at it in Arrowhead Provincial Park. It has been identified as the top 50 winter attractions in Canada. What we have here would provide very much to the similar type of aesthetic environment. But as councillor Kirby has indicated, if we're to develop this as a tourist trash and we need to look at it from a full scale and utilizing existing facilities that we have, we do have the luxury of, we have an existing second Samboni. It's not licensed presently or insured for usage outside of the community center. We would need to look at doing that. And of course, existing staff that we have would be able to maintain it via cooperation between public works department and community services depending upon some laws.
And just to add to that, and the reason that this, uh, report has been brought in staged, you know, we brought a report asking if you guys want us to do the detailed process because this is going to be a very significant project for the community center and we're anticipating the cost to be about 75 or a hundred thousand dollars for this. If, as long as council's comfortable with paying that price, we'll go ahead and we'll do the background work on it. But it would be a lot of work, ask stuff to undertake. If council already knows, listen, that's more than I'm willing to spend. It would be good to know that now instead of putting that work onto the, uh, community center department if council's comfortable and thinks, yeah, I can, I can see that going into the budget and we'll go forward and see where we go.
I'm kind of in agreeance with councillor Kirby of possibly moving this to our strategic plan because that's coming forward here in the very near future. And further discussing it, I think it's a wonderful idea too. But that way we could, you know, discuss it and then bring it back and make a motion.
Council would just need to defeat this, uh, motion on the floor and recommend that we move to the strategic planning meeting.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, well, there's a, just, uh, you need to know what else we're talking about, they want to mention that, you know, this is, this is a really exciting project, I'm gonna be with councillor Kirby, we're gonna do it. It needs to be done exceptionally well. Just, just to kind of tailor the way we're doing Tumbler Ridge. But if we start getting projects like this, that not only are good for residents, but also the great people in town, we're, we are on our way to doing, doing something special for, for the Christmas festival, things like that. The mail, you know, we've got sleigh rides in the works, uh, that's could be, could very well be happening this year. And we start tying all that together, it really opens the door for a lot of other things that, uh, that before this work fees up.
Yeah, and, and so we should defeat, defeat this and then, and Mr. Wall would get, we went to the strategic planning session, Mr. Wall would know what we want to do before you put any work into it.
Yes.
So I think that would work great.
Okay, so, um, there was a recommendation on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? And there's a motion then, he wants to put that forward.
To the, uh?
Yes, yeah. Okay, Mayor McPherson, it's making a motion to, to our strategic planning session on the Monday. All in favor? Okay, second here, yeah. Councillor McCaughan, and all in favor? It's carried. Okay, and that takes us to 3.3, Summer Street Design Options. The communication comes from MacKay.
I'm gonna do three banner designs, so I'm gonna do the first option.
Second here? Mayor McPherson? And discussion?
Madam Chair, at this point, we just need amendment to that motion specifying A, B, or C.
Oh, okay. And is a discussion on whatever those preferences, A, B, or C?
I, I like to see, mainly because of our branding, that we've spent a few dollars on, uh, that's going. Mike, in your. I'm agreeing if we're gonna spend money for a rent.
All in favor for C? Opposed? It's carried. And do we want to discuss the next meeting or is that something that can? I think we're doing the asset management before we go, so it wouldn't be till September, so we can bring that meeting forward later. Do we want to decide now? So, Madam Chair, the asset management, that's the way to go.
So we're back in the open and we gotta go to close?
That's correct.
The recommendation to go to close?
Recommendation to go to close as presented.
Scott, all in favor? Five minutes.